Mr. Chair, we are now live and recording. You can begin whenever you wish.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our committee, the whole meeting for June the 18th. Before we begin, I would like to remind everyone that the open part of the meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on our YouTube channel. And that being said, I would like to now call the roll. Please raise your hand, state your presence when I call your name. Mayor Watson.
I am here. Good morning.
Good morning. Deputy Mayor Nelson, good morning. Counselor Johnson, good morning. And with our staff here, we have C A O Todd Davis.
President.
Good morning. Clerk Deputy C A O Martina Jade Hartwick.
Good morning.
Good morning. Treasurer Paul Kramer. Our manager of recreational facilities, Mike Mood, is on vacation today, so our C A O Todd will be looking after his presentation. Fire Chief Chuck Pedersen, good morning. Manager of Public Works Jake Condon, morning Jake. And last but not least, Chief Building Official Don Helleman, thank you very much. With a quorum of the committee in attendance, I will call the meeting to order. And we'll start with the land acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that we are on the lands which are part of the eighteen eighteen treaty twenty and the traditional territory of the Anishna Beck bands of the great Ojibwe Nation. We offer our gratitude to the Ojibwe for their care and knowledge of the lands on which we work, live, and enjoy. May we honor and respect their teaching and our treaty obligations as we grow together. Now, is there any disclosure or peculiar interest with any of the colleagues? Seeing none? We will get started right in on any adoption of the agenda for today, please. Mayor Watson, Counselor Johnson. Any questions, comments, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Okay, we have no delegations or petitions or presentations, so we'll move right into the managers' reports. And as I said earlier, Mike Mood is not in today, so Todd, the floor is yours. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairperson Counselor Watt. To the rest of council, I'm happy to give the update from the Parks and Rec Division for this month. So I think the report is pretty straightforward. However, there's some things I'd like to point out. I know that the council has been interested. There has been some ongoing feasibility energy studies. The key to completing those studies is a series of workshops that are being held with staff. And the consultant, the second workshop, Mr. Mood indicates that it's scheduled to happen prior to the end of June, and I can confirm I will be participating. It's next Wednesday is when that workshop is. And we anticipate probably late summer having a report to bring forward to council. We are working through an ongoing lease agreement for the Back Dam property. You'll note in both the capital and in our administrative functions, we're working through the lease. We need to get that property surveyed to complete that work, and that survey is now complete. We're just waiting on it to be delivered from the surveyor. We talk, I'm also happy to speak to a couple of other things. Our liquor license has been renewed. That has gone through, and we've actually already hosted an event using the new liquor license, and we have plans, I know, for the, over the two hundredth anniversary celebration that's coming, that we will be operating a bar at the Duro Community Center for that event. Also, I would, we have some ongoing facility maintenance programs that we're working our way through this season. So there's some septic pumping happening, delivery of portable washrooms has happened. And we've worked with our partners at Peterborough County to facilitate some training in the area of chainsaws and wood choppers. Operationally, we're, I believe, the reports are that we have completed certainly being seasonal ready for all of our events. Our outdoor parks are now open and up to and including the Johnson Echo Trails have been cleared as part of the ice storm recovery. And then from a capital project perspective, last year, council pre-approved in late twenty twenty four new floor machines. Those machines were delivered and used throughout the season, so they are in active operation. We have, windscreen has been procured and installed at the new tennis pickleball courts. The north parking lot expansion is well underway. We anticipated it will be done by the end of this month. In fact, we anticipate that it will be done in advance of the end of the month. Windows have been ordered for Warsaw, and the last item for Parks Capital Projects this year are picnic tables, and we're working our way through procuring those. Happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. I'll open up the floor. Any of the committee members have questions? Counselor?
Yeah, to the chair. I'd just like to know, over at the, where they're doing the park in the park there, all the brush and trees, who's looking after to get rid of all that stuff? The trees they cut down and the brush and the, is that the township, or is that the thing, the lad that's doing the excavating? Do you know?
Through the chair to Counselor Johnson, I believe the work that we, so any of the work that was done to facilitate the parking lot expansion will be managed by the contractor. But there were trees also taken down at that site as part of, that we had identified as necessary to come down because they're ash trees. And they were, they were used as part of the chainsaw training course that I referenced, and those trees will be our responsibility. We'll take care of removing them.
Mayor Watson.
Thank you, Chair. Through you. Thank you, C A O Davis, for your update on behalf of Mr. Mood's report. A couple of questions. And this predates your time here, Todd, so it may, you may not be aware, but about a year or two now, we received a delegation from members who were of, you know, representing the pickleball community or wanting to put together some sort of group as we were opening the pickleball courts to make sure that there was fair use and rules and such in play. And I'm just curious, now that we've had a good full season of operation, how that's going? I routinely get questions from residents after hours, it seems, you know, the text messages that come in or quick calls wondering, you know, how do we access the nets? And, you know, there seems to be some question around that for folks who haven't done it before and want to try pickleball, and I understand there's an app, and so I'm just looking for some sort of information on how that's going. And, Mr. Davis, I see you're looking. I see Ash is like nodding. She might have some answers to those questions on Mike's behalf, but just looking for some updates on that.
Yeah, so Ashley, the administrative assistant for Parks Recreation and Public Works probably has some answers, but I can say anecdotally, I was out at that park recently inspecting some of the work that was being done from the parking lot perspective, and I toured the facility. And the pickleball courts in the middle of the day, at least, were very well, being very well used, and it was a pretty cordial group that seemed to be using them. So I don't have the details as to exactly what we've worked out formally with regards to that, and Ashley may be able to shed some light on it, but they are being well-used, I can tell you that.
Perfect. Thank you. Through you, Chair. So a little bit of an update of our pickleball courts this year. So last year, from the end of May, we had one rental in the end of May last year in twenty twenty four through to October. The, from a revenue standpoint, it was one thousand forty seven dollars and fifty cents when I pulled the report. This year, I'm happy to say that our totals in a revenue standpoint from April till June is over six thousand dollars this year. Our courts are being very, very well used. I think the app that you're referencing, Mayor Watson, is Team Reach. Team Reach is not an app that we operate through the township. It's actually members of the local pickleball community that look after ensuring that that app is updated. Now, there has been a lot of banter. We have an inside intel that is also connected with that app and said that we are a hot topic on that app because our courts are very, very well maintained. We know that in our surrounding community, Peterborough, city of Peterborough specifically, I know they've faced some challenges this year with their courts not being able to be open, to which our courts are fully operational, very well maintained. We've been receiving great feedback from the community and people within the surrounding community that are making use of those courts. And we've seen even some practices for a national competition that was actually out in Winnipeg from folks in our local community that are making use of the courts. So from a revenue standpoint, we are doing exceptionally well this year, and we only hope to continue that. Thank you.
Okay, Ellen, thank you, Chair. Through you. I appreciate that knowledge. So the rental side of it seems to be booming. It's, is there fair usage where people can just, you know, families can use it without renting it, assuming it's available? And then how do they access the lockbox to get the, excuse me, to get the nets, I think it is? And where do they find that information?
I can answer to that through you, Chair. So absolutely, people don't have to make a monetary booking. They can show up to the courts at any time during operational hours to access the courts or after hours as well, because our parks are open for business and make use of the courts. With respect to the lockbox code, we do want to put out correspondence on our website now that the park is safe of the storm debris and everything is fully operational to ensure that folks are able to access the lockbox, which is just, the code is nets. It's not a secret. And they put that code into the lockbox, are able to access the nets themselves. Some pickleball players are very specific to what nets they use. They bring their own nets, which is fully fine. Our facilities will operate with a different, every, any brand of net as far as I'm aware. But yeah, so it is fair game. People of the community, whether they make a monetary booking and book the time specifically to ensure that that time isn't taken, they could do it that way, or they can show up to the courts at their leisure and play a game of pickleball for families and players alike. Thank you.
Chair, through you, I've got a couple of other follow-up questions, not related to pickleball specifically, but on the report, if that's okay. Can I keep going with that? Thank you. The report specifically talks about the advertising program and that work is being done on that. I'm just curious what, what work is going on and what that looks like with the Fleming College marketing students and how that's progressing.
So I'll also pass this. So this is a project that Ashley is helping to oversee on our, on the behalf of the department. And so I'm happy to pass it over to her, our experiences so far with Fleming College.
All right, wonderful. Through you, Chair. So with the marketing and sponsorship packages, we kind of saw that there was a little bit of gap in bringing it up to the twenty first century, ensuring that our sponsorship is something that is adaptable for local businesses and feasible for local businesses. But referencing that gap, we wanted to ensure that we spent the time in making sure that it was something that, now that we're looking at local sponsorships or even provincial or national sponsorships is the hope. You know, we want to have a product that is solid for our community. So with, speaking with Todd and Mike, we came to the decision to partner with the local Fleming College, the digital marketing students. And we are happy to report that there are four student groups, groups of five, that are currently working on pulling together a new and improved sponsorship package for the township of Duro Dummer. Todd and I just sat in earlier this week, actually, on the business case and their presentations as a first go of what they've come up with. They have been working tirelessly to find out more about our community and our competitors, which are our local municipalities. And the presentations were fantastic. They are all on the right track. And we believe that they will present to us a very good product that we will take to market in hopes of securing some sponsors, not only for our community centers, but as well as our parks as well. So we are really excited to be working with Fleming College and getting our name further out into the community, that we are open for business here and, you know, working with the next generation. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Ash, you're on a roll. Let me see if you can handle this one, too. The report mentions working with the plumber on options to increase water pressure at the Duro Community Center. Over the winter, there were some significant challenges. So C A O, there were some significant challenges related to water, water pressure at the Duro Community Center. I'm just wondering what the status is of that work? And can our renters, namely in the winter, minor sports, particularly minor hockey, can they expect to have better flowing water for showers and within the facilities?
Through the chair to the mayor. Absolutely, they can expect that better water is coming in the future. So we have done, we've done a bunch of work to determine what the issues are. There will be a report coming forward in the near future that will talk to what it's going to take to improve the water system. Realistically, I mean, I think anecdotally and at a really high level, over the years, we've had to make a lot of modifications related to the water system there in terms of U V systems for water quality, and that has had a significant impact. We have, I believe, a solution presented to us from a local plumbing organization, and then we will be coming forward to council to talk about what it's going to take to make that work and how much it's going to cost. So you can anticipate that's coming to us in the near future.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, and I don't know who is going to field this one. Some time ago, about a year ago, I had conversations with Mr. Mood through our C A O of the day regarding the possibility of self-station, self-serve kayak rentals. It's something that's being offered. I saw it down in Gore's Landing area a couple of springs ago, and we looked at that collectively, we thought that might be a good opportunity to offer residents through one of our parks, whether it be at Duro or the Back Dam. I see that that's completely fallen off of the, any capital projects reports or the committee reports. So I'm just wondering if that was ever looked at or if that's something that's still being worked on.
I mean, if Ashley has information, let her weigh into it, but I think both of us are relatively, are new enough that it may not have fallen within our tenure in this corporation. I don't have an update on that. However, now that's brought to my attention, I'll make sure that it finds its way back onto the reports that come forward as we work our way through that, that interest.
Through you, Chair, to Mayor Watson. So I know that when I first started here, I started my, my tenure here back in mid of last August. It was something that was on the radar then, absolutely, and it is something that my manager, Mike Mood, has been researching and looking into, absolutely. I know that with recent events, and I know, I know the storm, we don't want to hear about it, but, you know, it's still very much a thing in our community that we are looking afterwards and, you know, taking responsibility of. But it's certainly something that has been on the radar, and I know that other events have taken, taken over, Mayor Watson. But we are looking at revisiting that project in hopes that it will make its way back onto the radar because we do believe it would be an excellent, excellent program for our residents of the community, you know, in the near future. So definitely put it back on the radar. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, excuse me, thank you both. I feel like I was in a bit of a pickleball match watching, watching ping pong back and forth. But thank you both for your answers. I appreciate that. Chair, I'm sufficiently done now.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Ashley.
Ashley?
Counselor Johnson.
I got it. Through the chair here, I have a question. Well, I know she took the floor pretty good. Usually when I ask a question, I want one question, one more, and it's it. But thanks, Tom, for letting me take up the floor so much. Anyways, first of all, what is the cost of renting the pickleball courts? Is it by the hour? Well, okay. And is it by the teams? Like, I have people that go there, and are they paying as a team, or how does it work?
Oh, there we go. Sorry. Only one mic can be in use at a time. Rookie mistake here. Through you, Chair. So the pickleball rates are at an hourly charge. They are just over thirty dollars an hour. I think it works out to be thirty three dollars and change an hour. And that's how it is paid. We don't offer any other fees. When you book by the hour, you book all four courts. So we're a little unique that you can't book one court out at a time. But we haven't seen that be a challenge. People are actually pretty happy, the feedback that we've received so far, that they get all four courts within that fee, because what happens is, a lot of times, our courts are used by folks running clinics, in which case there are multiple teams making use of our courts. So the feedback we've received so far as staff with respect to the way our courts are rented out at hasn't been a challenge. I think what the request has been and the feedback I've received is that they want more. So the uptake this year has been tremendous, as I indicated earlier, and we just hope to keep on this trajectory. Thank you.
Another question with the advertising. Now, you're getting interested in Fleming students participate? Do we pay? The first question.
That's a great question. Thank you very much. Through you, Chair. We do not pay them. This is a project that the college has taken on as part of the students' end-of-year assignment. So we are working with them until the end of August, I believe, on this project. And Mike Matucci, actually, from Lockside Trading Company, is the professor that is responsible for this component of the program. He has been wonderful to work with, a local entrepreneur in Young's Point, and has been tremendous at organizing the group of students and keeping them on track for exactly what we're looking for. But it is an unpaid part of their coursework. Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess, when they're, when they're looking at coming with a package, like the Mike come up with, I think we need to break that down a little bit better. Like, I've advertised in the, in the ring forty-some years. So I know what was done and what is expected. But the thing is, I think I've had different groups advertise, and they just did, say, for instance, the plaque on the wall compared to on the boards. So I'd like to be able to break that down, that they have the option of different things, a bit better than it is. You're following up with it. There were several sponsors that were on there for a few years. And last year, their sponsor thing just disappeared. So they were shocked to find out they didn't have on the boards, like the way they have been done there for years. So I never got to talk to Mike about it, but there's a few of them that want to know why their sponsors taken off the boards. Anyways, I'm glad you're looking in because there is good revenue for that, and like you say, even the parks. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to receive with thanks. Deputy Mayor Nelson, Mayor Watson, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. Thank you, Ashley. Thank you, Todd. All right, let's move right along to our next one. Chuck, the fire department, you're up, sir. Thank you.
Good morning. Just a couple of things to highlight in my report. Our first pump operator certification that we did in-house was successful. It was a lot of work, both on our training through our deputy chief and, and the participants. So it was a great effort, and we do plan to run another one this fall. So we are ramping up for that certification requirement as per legislation. So this will put us in good shape for that. Our paging project, just to let you know, that is still on track. We do expect that to be handed over end of September as the target for that. So that's good news for us. Our cancer prevention grant that we got through the province, all of our personal protective equipment extractors are, they have been installed. They're all set up. They're automatic as far as detergent-wise goes. So it's really user-friendly. All the signs are posted. The processes have been updated. They have been shared. So that's good news. We have a couple of pieces left on that to, to implement, but we're working away on that. So that's thankful for the province for that. As far as calls goes, you will see the data is a little bit abnormal back to the ice storm. So we have, we had one hundred and fifty-two calls for help between March twenty ninth and June tenth of this year. So that's up sixty-three from the same time period last year. As of June tenth, there have been two hundred and fifty calls for the year compared to one hundred and ninety-five in twenty twenty-four. So without the ice storm, our year today would be, would be comparable. So that's really the impact. Other than that, I'll take any questions if you have to.
Thank you very much, Chuck. Open up the committee. Any questions, comments to the fire chief? Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Yeah, through the, through the chair. Thanks for your report, Chuck. Chuck, if you remember back a while ago, when we were talking about the length of time to keep trucks and equipment, and I think through your association and probably through, through the association in Ontario, there was talk about maybe looking at moving them parameters to keep, keep stuff for, keep equipment maybe a little bit longer. We all know that lots of times, fire trucks maybe don't get a lot of use until they, until we need them. And just wondering if there was any movement on, especially with the cost of fire trucks, well, I think they've overdoubled. And just wondering if there's any movement on looking at expanding the length of time that we can keep them trucks, or is there any push from, from the fire chiefs to, to try and change them regulations or, or look at, at least sitting down with the province or pressuring? And if there's anything that, that us as a council can do for to, I'm not, I'm not so much saying that we have to. We don't want to say what it is, but at least if it was looked at and, and to lobby, lobby for to get any movement. And if the chiefs all feel that, you know, that some movement needs to be done on that, that's my question.
Sure. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So through the chair, there's certainly conversations regarding life expectancy of vehicles. It also ties back into the insurance realm. So, you know, in order for us to provide better rates for our residents, that's where the time comes into fact, and that's dealing with our pumpers and tankers. So our rescues and our medical trucks, they're not in that program. We set that, those numbers ourselves. Our pumpers and tankers are at twenty years, so they are still around for a while. But there's certainly conversations about how that's impacting with the pricing and what options that there may be. So the township council has a right to make a decision to say that, you know, we want a truck to be thirty years. But the, the result of that is, the spin-off from that is that you're going, like our tanker shuttle accreditation would be lost. They wouldn't allow that. And then the insurance rate would go from protection level, depending on where you are in the township, on the plumbers from a fire hall and all that stuff. That would be reduced to unprotected because they're not, you're not meeting the standards that they provide. So there's been lots of conversation about, you know, the, you know, the standards came to be because of the issues of, you know, older vehicles, you know, not making it to the scene and breakdowns. I think we're, we're well beyond that, and the vehicles are much better. But the, the challenge, I guess, we face Much better, but the the challenge, I guess, we face, you know, whatever position that you want to be in is. The emission side of things. So I think emissions on diesel vehicles are a challenge for any operator. So when you start getting into twenty plus years of a vehicle on the road. It's even more challenging to to deal with those repairs and getting parts. And. So there's a lot of challenges. I would say our association is having conversations. We are looking at those things. I don't. There hasn't been any significant forward movement on that. There is an NFPA standard that also has a committee that works. It's a reference document. Ontario has not adopted that particular standard, but it's still a tool that's used to set benchmarks. There's I haven't seen any changes being drafted proposed in that standard. But we refer back to a ULC standard. That's the Canadian version. And they've kind of migrated both of those standards together. So there's a lot of lot of information now that has been merged. But it's certainly a hot topic, but unfortunately I don't have any. You know, good news for you today on that, but it's certainly being looked at. But again, council does have. Like when we say it's a twenty year truck, that's because we want to have. You know, as a taxpayer, you to pay certain amount of money out of your right pocket for fire protection or you pay. Maybe double that amount out of your left pocket for your home insurance. So it's it's a way to try to make it. Better for the person, the homeowner in general. So I hope that kind of give you the picture.
Thanks for that, Chuck. I I just thought I'd follow up with that. So thank you very much.
Any other comments, questions? Counselor Johnson.
I through the chair, I just want to make comment that I was glad to use out there helping out. The volunteer firm with the brush not to and during this. Very nice. Yes. And again, I hear only comments on the work you guys. So again, thank you. Thank the. Terrific man. Thank you.
All right. Excellent. If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to receive with thanks. Mayor Watson, Counselor Johnson, any questions, comments? All in favor. Carrie, thank you very much. And as always, feel free to leave after your presentation unless there's something in the upcoming other departments that may pertain to you. But we don't want to keep you around because we know everyone's very, very busy. Okay, moving right along. Public Works Jake, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Through the chair. I'll just highlight a couple of items within the report. Our recruitment of seasonal staff is is completed. We have all seasonal staff in place. We had a good pool to pick from from this year. So it was. Yeah, unlike years in the past, we've had lots. We had lots of resumes this year. So that's good. Good to see. I won't get into too much about the storm. Obviously, a lot of this report relates to the storm cleanup. Our grading is continuing. Following the grading, we are completing the annual calcium applications. Staff attended book seven training as well as chainsaw training. We installed the docks at the Krakens and Crows. One of the the security points at one of one of the docks and Crows is in need of replacement. And we're working to complete that. We're going to need a barge to to carry the block out to to drop it off at the end of the dock. To and then there's a chain that comes up to the dock to secure the dock. So just working with trying to secure that barge to place that concrete block. Over the next couple of weeks, that should be in place. Our roadside grass mowing is started. Got a good jump on that. Our capital projects, we're working on caves road right now. Doing some ditching. The road has been pulverized as well, replacing culverts. Following that, we will be applying fresh gravel and then the final surface treatment application will complete that project. The fourth line dumber has been pulverized. The contractor moved in and completed both those roads. A week ago, I believe. So it's ready for us as well to move down. Once we're finished caves road to do the ditching and culvert replacements as well. Demir's Road, I will give you a little bit of a highlights, not on my report, but I did contact Hydro One for the tree removal. They are to go and inspect. I did receive a call back. They are going to send a crew out to inspect the lines and the trees. If they're within the proximity of the lines, they will take care of it. I did. Communicate that we would assist with the cleanup. Generally, they're a little more proactive if the township's willing to do the cleanup. They're not too. They're not too worried about cutting the tree down. So we'll I'm just waiting to hear back from them regarding the what's going to happen there, when that's going to happen. On the waste management side of things. Household hazardous waste event was held May twenty-fourth. That went well. Our next one will be August sixteenth. The green waste yard waste bin is in place at the Public Works Grad and it'll be in place until late fall. Weather dependent. We usually we keep it there right till the the weather changes. In the fall. So one other item, I understand last night, the brush has been extended to July fifth. So that I did make staff aware of that. If they receive any brush brought in and as well as frontline staff, if they receive any calls. And I believe that's it for any updates. If there's any questions, I'm happy to help.
Thank you very much, Jake. Open up the committee. Any comments, questions for Jake? Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Thanks for your report, Jake. Just just one question I have is any idea? And I know you're limited to the contractor, but any idea when cage road would be finished? I did get that question.
Through the chair, the the contract through the county is all work should is to be completed by September thirty. So the surface treatment should be on by September thirty, if not earlier.
Thanks for that, Jake.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mayor Watson.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Mr. Condon. With respect to I don't see it in your report, but I may be missing it on this pass. The BPOA and the speed sign. I know there were some meetings that were planned. I'm just wondering if you can give us a bit of an update as to what is moving forward with that, please?
Through the chair. Yes, my apologies. I didn't have this on the report. We did come to an agreement with the BPOA. They will be they will be placing traffic sign or speed signs within the roadway. We have agreed on locations. They need to purchase the sign as of yet. I can say that the county has purchased an additional sign for all the municipalities to use. It is currently in place on Birchview Road. I had that prior to our communications with BPOA. So that was high on the list. So they have put it in place. Usually they're indicating it'll stay there for two to three weeks. It's been there for a week now. So it may be removed shortly. But we have come to an agreement with BPOA. They will be purchasing the sign and placing it in various locations in the future.
Thank you for that. And one final question. It's it's outside of your purview specifically, but has impact on you. The MTO work that's happening on Highway twenty-eight. From the the top edge of Lakefield boundary right down to Highway seven. Are we experiencing any challenges on township roads as a result of that construction? You know, people trying to avoid the construction? Is it causing any troubles? Are you aware of any any issues to date?
Through the chair. No, I'm not aware of anything as as of now. I've traveled it a couple of times. There's a minor inconvenience there, but it generally moves along pretty well. So no, I haven't heard of anything as of yet.
Thank you. One issue that has come forward to me, and I did raise it with staff last week, who I believe raised it with the MTO. Is line marking at Highway twenty-eight and County Road thirty-two, Block Road at the Leahy's Market. Where those turning lanes are or we know are but aren't marked and it's making it difficult for folks to. Who aren't familiar with the area know those kind of right and left turning lanes. Are is creating a bit of chaos. I noticed even just this morning that that work hadn't been done. So I would just ask again that we follow up with MTO. To see if temporary line markings can be put in place until they're ready to finalize that work.
Through the chair, yes. It is a construction zone, so there will be signage that is not on the road. I was in the area. They do put small square markings on the road to differentiate lane to lane. The turning lanes will not, in my opinion, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I don't want to speak on their behalf. But they will not be in place until they're complete. The the work is complete and they have the contractor come in and spray the lines. They do put small squares to differentiate lane to lane, but they will not be marking the training lanes.
Okay, I I I know this isn't your issue, but I think that we need to push back with the MTO on this. Because on the weekend, when the construction crews are away and there's no sign of workers present, people resume going eighty or faster. And you know what I what I'm seeing routinely as I travel that road myself and others have communicated to me is. People who are traveling north on Highway twenty-eight. Will encounter cars effectively at a dead stop, wanting to turn right into the business or turn to the west down Block Road. And if those people don't, those drivers who are making those turns. Are travelers through our community and aren't aware that there are actually lines there. They're coming to a dead stop in the live lane to say turn left or or west onto Block Road. And and people come up that hill onto a dead stop vehicle, turning left when it really should be in the left hand lane that isn't delineated, right? So I understand the tabs that are there to separate the north and southbound lanes on the whole. But those turning lanes are really critical for the the free movement of traffic. And and I've seen even more recently in our own township at the intersection of Television, Park Hill, County Road four. When that intersection was being reconstruction reconstructed. The the contractors had put temporary turning signal, like the turning markings on at that intersection. So it would again help with the ease of traffic movement. So I would ask that staff once again implore the MTO to put temporary line markings on as it relates to the lanes. Just to ensure that we have safe travel through that through that intersection specifically.
Through the chair to the mayor, we made a call last week to the MTO to make that request. We will follow up again this week. We recognize as we get closer and closer to the candidate, we candidate probably gets busier and busier in this in that part of the world. And so we will we will make the requests and see what we can get them to do. They did put the marking like the tabs on, but we'll see if we can get a better delineation of lanes. For you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Counselor Johnson.
Thank you through the. I applaud they were through because that dangers dangerous. I try all the time too. It's like they say, speed eighty. Well, I wish they were an eighty. No, it's eighty now. They do. But anyways, that is a very critical spot, you know, the traffic and they get very, very big. So it's in what you're going there. And I want to say thanks for group from the storm and all for the fixing of roads from the spring. We always know it's challenging. Can't get out them all at one time, but I know some people that were complaining to me. I've been had seniors. They really appreciate the work you should do. I want to say thanks.
Through the chair. Thank you. And we will like as Todd has mentioned, we'll follow up with the MTO and see if we can get something in place.
Thank you, Jake. I just have one quick question. If I could, it goes back to the speed signs. We used to have one. Is it? No longer usable?
Through the chair. No, we still have ours and we do put it out from time to time. You may see it entering Warsaw at the top of the hill. Yeah, we have a list of roads that we put it on annually and it still gets used.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? If none, I will entertain a motion to receive with thanks. Counselor Johnson, Deputy Mayor Nelson, any comments, questions? All in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Six point four, Planning Department. Ashley looking out for Emily's again? No, no, no. I just thought maybe you were making the move to the podium.
I think that'll be me. So before you council or committee, you have a report twenty twenty-five dash oh nine. And. You you have my report in front of you, so I won't I won't read it verbatim. I think that a few things that of note for me is. Last year, we had one official plan amendment come through for us and and already this year, we have two files on our desk for that. And we have also last year for site plan approval or our site plan agreement had one. And we're sitting currently at three, working through them with the applicants. And so those are nice. I think they're good indicators of. Excuse me, the amount of development that's happening. And especially if we look to site plan. That's a lot more in commercial. And so we're seeing some commercial development come through, which is great for the township. And then anecdotally, I was talking to the planning consultant that that had helped us through our transition period. And they just made a comment about the fact that, you know, it's a hopping little community and there's lots going on when it comes to planning. And I think that again, that's a positive outlook for future development for 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 myself, for both planning and building. So we're excited to see that and excited to see that Duro continues to grow. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, Don. I'll open up the floor to the committee for questions, comments. Mayor Watson.
Thank you, Counselor Watt. Through the chair. The reference to pre consultations and working with the county on these, I'm I'm a little confused about pre consultations. And how we offer that as a service to residents here through the township. The county also offers that pre consultation service and charges for it. You know, does does an applicant have to go through both? Can they choose one or the other? How do they find one or the other? And and what is when it's being done through our office, through the township? What is the anticipated turnaround time? Standard that that applicants should expect from those pre consultation meetings? So if you could maybe just elaborate on what that all looks like and and again, as it relates to the county and the collaboration.
Through the chair. Thank you, Mayor Watson. We do have two different types of pre consultations. So the county one is led when it's a county approval process. So even like a preliminary severance review, they would be holding. They have us at the table to discuss again what we would what we see in the file. And what our potential comments would be or what we might be requiring from the applicant. Township led pre consultations. They typically fall to someone who has who doesn't meet our current zoning bylaw when they're looking for a building permit. Sometimes people come preemptively for them as well. So they haven't been told that they don't meet it yet. And so that's listed on our website. It's a service we offer. They sign up on the website. They submit the forms through there. And then what happens is is we review the file with them and talk about. Every file, the scenario is so different, but if we took it as maybe the one who came through a building permit process and doesn't meet the zoning bylaw. What happens is we identify the building department identifies for them that they don't meet the current zoning bylaw. And tells them that they can either modify their approach or seek planning relief. And and so then if they choose to go to planning relief, they'd come through for a pre consultation. We'd have all parties involved. So we typically send an invite out to the county. So they're going to speak to whether the. Amendment to whether it might their planning application, whether it be zoning bylaw amendment or minor variance, would adhere to the official plan. We have the MTO. We put them. We ask them for comments. And again, if it's not within their corridor, they usually don't send them. We ask First Nations to attend and they usually do attend. And again, if it's within their lands, then they they'll make comment on that. And we have the Conservation Authority attend. And that's usually so all parties kind of come to. We talk about what the proposal is, what the potential studies might be or or some of the challenges they may see through their application. To give them a good understanding of what they would be looking at. So then when they leave that, they can make a decision. Probably start on some costing and figure out if it's something that they wish to go through or potentially either abandon or modify their drawings. Turnaround time, we do provide notes for pre consultations. And we are aware that as we kind of went through our staff transition, some of our our notes had fallen off the table and not been captured as outstanding. We are currently fully caught up on them. Our typical way that we tried to deal with them. We are currently fully caught up on them. Our typical way that we tried to deal with them was to get them out by the next meeting date. So if we hold them once, we hold pre consultations once a month. That was our goal. We've now since escalated that to two weeks after. And so one thing that we. Whether perceived or true, we thought if we leave it till the next meeting, we're now trying to get those pre consultation notes out. And trying to prep for all the pre consultations that we're doing. And because of that. That's where we may have found some of the downfall in getting the notes out. So we then accelerated that timeline to only two weeks after our pre cons. So again, saw that that was a challenge for us. Hopefully we've we fixed that challenge and as we move through, we'll continue to get those notes out. If we aren't going to hit that timeline, then we'll be we'll communicate with the applicant on that. Hope that answers.
Yep, thank you very much.
I sent any other comments, concerns, questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to receive with thanks. Deputy Mayor Nelson and Counselor Johnson, all in favor? Carried. Thank you very much. Thanks, Don, for looking after that. And moving right along, we'll just go right on to you next for the building department update, please.
Thank you very much. And so again, for you, committee, you have a building department report 2025 dash 07. I think that there's probably a couple of things here that are that's well worth highlighting and always happy to have discussion on them. When we look at our year to date permit submissions, we can see that we're on par with our 2024 numbers. And I think that that's given what what I think we see in the industry, that's a good sign that we're there. However, I don't think that that tells the full story. And I just wanted to be sure that we that we put this in there is our revenues are actually down 68%. So though we we have the exact same amount of permit submissions, our revenue is down. Now, part of the reason is is that number is skewed. We had two large projects come through in quarter two that elevated our revenues. And so I think it's that we won't hit that like, and that's why there's such a big discrepancy. However, if we remove just those two permits. We would see that our revenue is actually up from the 2024 year. I did address this in our last committee, the hole, and it stayed similar is we actually don't have the same amount of new housing going on. So we do have new housing happening and kind of a lot of its reconstruction, let's say on the waterfront. But there there tends to be more garages and accessory unit or accessory structures. But again, we'll continue to 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 kind of keep you apprised of of where the numbers are and what they look like. We do, we do have the mandatory maintenance inspection program for sewage systems that had rolled out and are just want to note that our inspections do start in July. So again, the letters have been sent out, the the questionnaires have been sent out and we've received a portion of them back. And that we are continuing to work with the discretionary sewage system maintenance inspection program and. We have, I feel that we have put together a very nice package for council and we're just finalizing it now and we expect to be back in the August council meeting to discuss that. And what we hope to do in that is to roll out what that what that truly looks like and what this we're going to make council aware of what the certificates look like, what people are going to receive, how they're going to be handled. And so we should be able to give you a very comprehensive review of what that program will be. And again, take take any concerns or ideas that you have. And if we need to implement them, we will. And then with that, that's when we'll bring back our fee structure and we'll see some building department fees as well. Get in there. And I think that leads just to my last one is that we continue to monitor kind of how our department spends its time, just to better understand. What what the building community needs, but also how to make sure that that we're either a staff appropriately or cost recovery is there. And so we're we're really focusing on that and. We'll try to highlight some of those things and potentially. Continue conversation with council on on what that would look like for us. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'll open up the committee. Any comments, questions? Counselor Johnson.
Through the chair, I was just wondering, you know, a couple of meetings, we're talking about the all the up. And then new code. There any big changes that we do take in place or pass on to the to the people that are starting to build homes and that?
Thank you. Through the chair, Counselor Johnson. There has been lots of training offered through not only the ministry, but through our governing body like the Ontario Building Officials Association and that a lot of the local designers are part of. And so we've had training through that. I don't think that we've seen. The need to publish anything like most of the designers are up to date on that stuff, the changes. Depending on what you're doing can be major. But again, because there, I think because of the amount of training and the amount of knowledge that we had that this was coming forward, it hasn't seemed to be an issue as of yet. Probably our biggest. Change, I want to say that I'm that that I noticed the most and and I think it's a very good changes on that. There's a part in the code for agricultural structures now for farm buildings rather than going to the old farm building code. And so that's nice. And I think that just again helps our community as as it's something that we see here.
Any other comments, questions? Don, I have one, maybe a couple, if I could, please. How many mandatory like in the water intake that have to get done every five years? How many do we have in our township?
To the chair, we currently have 16 in our township.
Thank you. That was just a curiosity question. My other question. I think and correct me if I'm wrong, we talked in a previous meeting that when we decide on what price we're going to use for the inspections, it has to come to a public meeting. Is that correct?
That is to the chair. Yes, so maybe twofold on this is the mandatory inspection program. We didn't change the fees. We've stayed with the old approved fee so that wouldn't and the program itself, I don't believe councils sought change on or. Realistically, they're like, it's a mandatory program. We have to do it. So we aren't coming forward with any changes with those fees, but. You are absolutely correct that for the discretionary program, we are suggesting that there be change in fees and we must hold a public meeting.
Okay, perfect. That's good. So so the ones that you're going to do this year, all under the old pricing of what was it 150 or whatever it was or $200, whatever the price was?
Through the chair, the mandatory inspection program, because the homeowner must do the inspection every five years where we were on a 10 year cycle. The fee was cut in half. And so they paid $75 for their initial type one fee. So a type two fee is is the. The elevated fee, but the type one is it was half the number 75.
All right. So the ones that we're going to do this summer, the section along the lake, what is the price for them? Or do we still stay with the old price until we actually approve a new one?
So the we're only doing the 16 that are in the source water protection and then. The new, the waterfront properties or the properties that are above a water body, which is kind of the count, the direction that council had given us on creating our new area. That's what we're bringing forward in August. We're going to have the new mapping for you, the new numbers, a new proposed fee. And and like I say, what the certificates are going to look like, what the interactive part of the website is going to look like and and how we're going to track things. And so we'll we'll be able to give council that comprehensive. You know, review of of what this program really is and so that there's not as much, hopefully not as many questions about what it is.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions, concerns? If not, oh, Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Just just one through the chair, just one thing, Don. Just wondering if you're you're going to include also a section in the discretionary. Section if if we have somebody that calls in, even though it's not part of the discretionary, but say. I'll just using this scenario, somebody calls in from Cattaslo that would like their septic system. So is is there going to be a little part of that 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 would be allowed to handle handle? Anybody that would call in and ask for a septic inspection? Through through the town chair.
Through the chair, Deputy Mayor, I I do apologize. My memory might not be perfect on this one. I I believe that that wasn't something that council moved forward with in their direction. And if Todd may be able to correct me.
Through the chair, the deputy mayor, I believe when we brought that report forward, the direction was that it was. That we were encouraged of somebody, if an independent individual wanted their septic system inspected. That we would we would direct them or guide them to the private septic inspection companies that work because they're either either as cost. Competitive and we don't want to take business away from local businesses.
Thanks for that. Okay, excuse me. Okay. Any other comments, questions? None. I will entertain a motion received with thanks. Mayor Watson, Counselor Johnson, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Don, I'll do your next one.
Thank you. And again, committee, building department report 2025 09, which is regarding the active investigation policy. So staff did review the current policy and as stated in my report, saving except for some minor proposed changes. We do recommend the policy stays in place and our recommendation is that we bring forward. Or sorry, that we not a recommendation, but we will be bringing forward the proposed amendments to the to another appropriate council meeting. And I do cover some of the the amendments that that will be proposing, though not an exhaustive list. I think, again, happy to answer questions on them. I can I can read through them if you if you'd like, but they're relatively minor changes.
Thank you, Don. Any comments, questions, concerns on the policy? Mayor Watson, your floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair, through you. I'm wondering about the active investigation policy, if it spans terms of council and notifying and briefing. Any attrition that may happen because of that. And if the policy should include that, and I I believe it should. But I feel like there are, there could be up, there could be instances where a file would carry forward, particularly some of those protracted legal files that. Tend to go on. So just to to be aware of that and perhaps include that in your policy.
Through the chair. Thank you, Mayor Watson. I think fantastic point. We will make sure that we stay focused on that. I know that we were introducing a way to to. We don't have a formal way to tell people that that they're relieved of this policy and that'll be something that we definitely take into account. I appreciate that.
Mayor, Deputy Mayor Nelson.
Yeah, through through the chair, Don, I might have missed this. It should have been a question maybe for the last report, but can you can you tell us how many active? Active billing permits that that the department actually has out now? Or do you do you know that the process?
Through the chair to Deputy Mayor. I apologize. I don't have that number right in front of me. I can do, probably try to grab that quickly as we as we move through some stuff. I still anticipate it somewhere in the 1300 range. Of of open permits. I think that we're, again, we had we had taken a number. If I remember the numbers right in my head, we had about 900 old permits. And as we've close, I think we've closed a significant amount of them, but then we have the new old permits that get into that. And then we also have the the permits that are coming.
So further question of that, that's that's great. If you could tell me how many that was. Or how many how many active permits we have actually open? And could you tell me how many we've actually opened this year? If like January, January till now is my question, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right, I will entertain a motion received that report with thanks. Mayor Watson, Counselor Johnson, all in favor? Carried. Don, I guess you have one more here. Thank you.
Thank you. Into the committee again, report 2025 dash 10, and it is regarding the noise by law and dogs and how we deal with them within the township. So again, the committee passed resolution 24 dash 2025 and had asked us to reach out to and and look at how other municipalities. Address the issues of of barking dogs and how they deal with them, whether they're in the rural setting or an urban setting. And we did not only review the bylaws of other municipalities, but we reached out to the enforcement officers as well and had conversations with them just about. How they how they do do it in their township and and kind of what their procedures are. We do know that we're we're on par with the other municipalities and and really how we enforce. The other municipalities don't differentiate between urban and rural areas. The one thing that I that we did note, which is is that we have exemption for livestock guardian dog. Where mostly other townships do not. So I think that again, that's something that serves our our residents well, as we do know that they exist within our township. And so I think just at the time, we're not recommending any changes to our current bylaw or the enforcement procedures on how how we deal with dogs. Again, whether through urban or rural areas.
All right. Thank you very much. Any comments, questions on that report? I just have one, Don, and it was just a. Little clip that was put in there that was a, you know, we could, but we're not necessarily we're going to put in a caveat in there that the person. If someone was getting a fine, they had the option to come before council and ask to have it. Repealed or waived or, you know, if they had a really, really good reason, but was that given any more thought or just leave it the way it is?
So at this time, our suggestion would be to leave the bylaw the way it is, just for the the amount of administration costs that go to staff time to to work that into the bylaw, write it and and get kind of a policy in place. We haven't, we haven't experienced a a large need for that to happen. And so again, when they're being fined, there is there is a process for them. So if we do lay a charge, there is a process through right currently, the provincial offense that they they can go through. For seeking relief from. And that was kind of how we had we had dealt with it or saw it.
All right, thank you. If there's no other comments, questions, I will, oh, Counselor Johnson.
Yeah, just directly a little bit, but still go with noise fireworks. Do you have any? Can people complain about fireworks? Do we have anything on there that would stop people from doing works or is it just kind of? That they can do what they want?
Through the chair to Counselor Johnson, I would want to, before I'd offer comment on that, I would want to review. Two different bylaws that we have in place. And I think that between those, then we'd also, I think the other factor would be fire. And how that would look for the fire department. But I can, it's something that we can definitely look into and get an answer to you. I just before I speak on that, I'd want to to review and know exactly what how we would interpret. It it also depends a little bit on the complaint, but.
Through the chairs. I'm just asking that I don't know that there's a need to spend any great time on it, but I just asking if. If there's, you know, some people, some people, you know, bothers animals and that don't like the noise, but I just wonder if there's any that if anybody has complained. I'm not looking complaints, but I wonder if there was. All right, thanks.
Through the chair, we we haven't received a complaint as of yet on fireworks.
All right. Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion received with thanks. Deputy Mayor Nelson. And Counselor Johnson, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Paul, finance, you're up, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And through you, Chair. There are two items I'm just going to highlight and go into a little bit more detail from my report. And then if there's questions from anything else in the report, happy to answer. The first one is regarding the online payments. This has been a long time coming, but we did go live last week. And so far, the soft launch has gone smoothly. We don't get a lot of volume on these payments. Hopefully we can increase the volume. One of the things that will be coming is a little bit more of a robust communication strategy. If you go onto our website as of, I think yesterday or today even. There is a pop up announcing the new payment options. And so just to summarize, the portal is for credit card payments. The portal directly on our website does add the two and a half percent fee. And now the portal for corporate services accepts property taxes is what it has always done. Tax certificates, dog tags, FOI payments for building and planning, building permits and planning fees and work orders and zoning requests can also be paid through this portal. For fire burn permits and fire file searches. And for parks and recreation facility booking can now be paid through the booking. They have their own portal. This allows for the the booking customer to receive an invoice, click through and and make payment. The other piece, I'm going to spend a few minutes discussing here is our ultimate finance system replacement. I have mentioned in previous reports that Great Plains, which is our current financial system. Um, I have mentioned in previous reports that Great Plains, which is our current financial system, uh, support for it ends in twenty thirty. I know this sounds far away, uh, but there are a few factors that are making this a critical kind of current issue, uh, and not something that we can ignore. So knowing that there's an end of life coming. Uh, in my opinion, it doesn't make sense to continue to invest and spend money on upgrades uh that relate to the system. Um, whether it's processes or or new features. Uh, for example, I was planning a. Invoice approval project, which would actually be completed through stone share. Um, this project would cost a little over twenty thousand, but many of the new systems that we will ultimately be looking at have this feature built in. Uh, so to spend the time implementing the this new process, spending the money to implement it, and then in. Just a few short years, we will have a new system uh that could accomplish that process. I think a new system will also allow for improved functionality, so there are other processes that are still manual or dated. Uh, for example, our budget is completed in Excel, um, which is fine for for some users and and uh poses some other risks. But again, many of the new systems have budgeting functionality built in. Um, I know some of the systems I've looked at have things like a point of sale system, uh, which would improve. Payment processes, both, I know I just spoke about a new payment portal, but that is something that we needed to create in the backend. Uh, and then there's still processes we have to do to apply those payments into our system. Whereas a new system would have a point of sale, uh, an online portal, it would make it uh payments better in person and online. There's also going to be some potential to uh reduce the number of softwares we have into one ecosystem. Uh, just a one example of this will be our facility booking software. Um, there's a, there's one product out there that has facility booking module built right into the finance system. This makes it much easier for uh, you know, single customer, a single portal where a resident could log in and and see multiple things. So, and also with our, you know, we don't have a huge IT support system, having everything under one system would reduce complex uh complexity. That are, that is created when you have different integrations with different systems. This also may end up having some cost efficiencies, uh, having less companies to pay. Um, there will also be some efficiencies from a hardware perspective. Many of the new systems are. Cloud based and reduce our needs internally um for. Um, servers and and backups alike. Uh, this also improves, I think, some of our risk, uh, or reduces our risk that we have uh currently to to attacks and and us data theft. Um, and I think the last one and one more important one is my opinion, uh, that will drive us to consider replacements sooner rather than later. Um, there are a number of organizations that use GP, and they're all going to be reaching end of life, end of support at the same time. There are only so many good consultants who do this work and do implementations. So, you know, I think. I know I live in the system day to day and and uh, but this system really is critical to the functionality of our of our township. It it pays our vendors, it pays our employees, and it records all our um, all of our accounting work. So. I I have a concern and and fear that the longer we wait, uh, the more booked up these good companies and uh good consultants are going to get booked up. Um, I am working with two vendors right now just to get some high level estimates. So we can put that into the uh future budgets, specifically twenty twenty six. Uh, maybe make a business case for whenever and what whatever timing we ultimately decide. Um, I know the one company I'm speaking with is already booking into Q two, Q three for twenty twenty six. Uh, many municipalities are having these conversations, including municipalities in our lower tier or in our county, sorry. Um, and the county themselves, and so uh I think you're going to see many municipalities. Be going to market very soon, um, and it's going to create a backlog with these companies. So. Again, my plan, I'm working with a couple of companies to uh get some estimates, get some understanding of what their systems can and cannot do. Um, and I would expect future upgrades, uh, updates on this issue will come kind of via a separate report or likely the twenty twenty six budget. Uh, with that, I'll I'll wrap up and uh and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Paul. I'll open the floor to the committee for comments, questions. What he wants to put their two cents into the finance? Mayor Watson.
I'll talk, Ben. Thank you, Chair, through you. Uh, Mr. Kramer, just uh, thank you for that. Update on software. I I I don't have any questions. I think you've got your work cut out for you. I know it's an onerous uh task to do a software audit, a tech stack audit and see. Um, what's what and what's going to serve you well. Um, my question is more related to a little bit sooner future of the audit. Um, just looking for an update as to when council can expect to receive the uh twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four, twenty twenty four audit.
The auditors were on site, or sorry, through your chair, um, the auditors were on site was the dates. Um, May twelfth to to the sixteenth. Um, everything went fairly smooth. I would say we're at about the ninety five percent completion. Mark, uh, there. There there was something caught with our bank reconciliation, and, you know, I I actually welcome their input and their review. Uh, we have a small team and we don't always have uh. The resources to do all the reviews that are needed, so um, it's appreciated when they catch this stuff. But it 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 was a lengthy process internally with our team to uh. Catch and and correct the the bank reconciliations. Um, it's thousands of datas, uh, lines of data to to reconcile. And so that put us a little bit behind. I was hoping to have the statements presented to council in August. Um, that's still potential, but probably a more realistic timeframe is September.
Thank you for that.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to receive with thanks. Deputy Mayor Nelson. Uh, Mayor Watson, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much, Paul. All right, we're moving along very well here. Martina, clerk's office, you're up.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you have my report before uh before you. I just want to highlight a few um items in the report. Uh, the first one I wanted to highlight is that the department uh recently conducted its first wedding ceremony in the Millennium gazebo. Uh, it went very well. I very much appreciate staff help uh organizing that and working with the couple. Uh, I think it was uh very worthwhile and everyone uh enjoyed themselves, so that was a a nice thing we were able to do for that couple. Um, on the records management front, uh, since Ava's joined us in May, uh, she's been undertaking a review of our township vault. Uh, so that work is now done. The vault is reorganized and uh inventoried, uh, and we have a much better system uh for keeping those documents secure. Um, and then she's also doing a review of other documents uh that are reaching the end of their retention cycle, so we're making headway here, and uh that's exciting to see. Uh, the department in our, my report said had received fourteen FOIs. We've now received sixteen FOIs. Uh, eight of those are closed, and we are uh working through the rest of them. They're at various stages. Uh, there have been three complaints submitted um through our formal complaint process in twenty twenty five. All of those files have been closed. Uh, we have been getting uh complaints about bylaw matters through our formal complaint process, so. Uh, those are transferred to the bylaw department for action. They don't go through the formal complaint processes. They're not part of the policy. Um, as you uh are aware, um, we've started making uh upgrades to the council chambers, so. Uh, the microphone system has uh been worked on. Um, we all use it. By talking into the microphones, the sound is directly inputted into our YouTube uh video, uh, so it's much clearer for those listening online, and. Uh, that's why it's so important to make sure you speak uh directly into the microphone. We've also changed the sound in the room. Um, so that there's less uh reverb in the room, and those in the audience can clearly hear what's happening. Uh, without that interference we were getting before, so I think that's been a uh a good upgrade, and there'll be more upgrades to come over the uh. The summer, so hope to have those in place early fall. Um, we are continuing uh to see um. Members of the public uh looking to us for information, which is great. So the township now has uh two hundred and fifty eight subscribers on YouTube, so that's eight new subscribers since the last report. Six hundred and seventy eight followers on Facebook, which is ninety new followers. And three hundred and twenty five followers on Instagram, twenty two new followers. So we continue to see our social media numbers increase, and uh we're happy to have. Uh, those people join us and uh be able to get information in these other methods. Uh, the community tree program is coming up. Um, staff have uh worked with our vendor to place the order for trees and are now working on the public communication pieces. Uh, those will be out shortly, and um I think we're going to have a. A great project, and we've got some different trees ordered again, um, to give the public a variety of options, so. Um, other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you very much, Martina. Comments, questions from the committee? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to receive with thanks. Mayor Watson, Council Johnson, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much, Martina. And last but not least, our CEO, Todd, the floor is yours, sir.
Uh, thank you to the chair to the rest of council. So my uh update this month is pretty brief, uh, pretty straightforward, but there's a couple of areas I'd like to highlight. Um, uh, I'm pleased to say that we hosted our annual, uh, so first of all, we had an all hands staff meeting, which was my first for the entire staff. Uh, last Thursday, June twelfth, uh, we had a good one hour session with all of the staff, worked through a number of elements related to. Uh, future uh staff code of conduct, uh, and some of our health and safety work that needs to be done. Um, and then we, uh, traditionally that is, uh, then, um, uh, then we have uh the presentation of long term service uh awards. What I will say is that we did not have any staff this year qualified for long term service awards. We got close, a couple of people were within a year. Uh, so we we look forward to next year's award ceremony where. More people will get them than zero that happened this year, and then we had a staff barbecue uh to celebrate the coming of summer. Which was uh, uh, well attended by staff and council, so thank you for those that have that participated. Uh, and uh, then I would also, I think that another highlight that I would bring, so we have some compliance training required, so. Some of the basic uh occupational health and safety uh training and and things like WMS that expire over time, so. Uh, we have uh with a gap in CAO last year, we have a little bit of a gap in terms of some people that are a little bit behind on that, and so. Uh, over the next uh thirty to sixty days, we'll work to get everybody brought into compliance. It also happens to be. Um, right now, it seems like every week, uh, I have a staff member whose uh WMS certification is expiring, so I would imagine that we, around this time. A period of time ago, we brought all the onboard, brought all the staff up to speed on WMS, and so uh we're just going through that sort of routine um piece. Um, uh, I I think the other thing, a a couple of other things I'd like to highlight, so. Uh, during my tenure in the organization, I have initiated a quarterly meeting with the CEO of the library to get up to speed, recognizing that they. Run their own operations, but we we uh manage their facility for them. Uh, those are fruitful discussions. We we had our most recent update this week. Uh, and I got a little bit of a a preview. I know that uh Council Watt participated in strategic planning activities that they had this past weekend. Uh, and I and I can say that they're well on the way to getting through things like a strategic plan and their capital plan for this year. Uh, I am very pleased to announce that uh if you leave council chambers and walk down the hall, you will notice for the first time in a quite some time. Uh, that the elevator uh in this building, or it's actually not an elevator, it's a lift of some description, but it is active and operational. Um, we have sent one staff member up there. What I would say, I know, uh, what I will say is it is not a fast mover. Uh, so if you, if you're in a rush to go anywhere, you may not want to take that uh elevator. Um, it'll take some time for us to gain confidence uh in its operations, and so uh there'll be lots of boxes going up and down probably in it for the next little while, unless human beings until we are. Uh, uh, very confident that it can and will operate and function effectively. I do owe council a report that I'll I'll bring forward at a near uh future council meeting. Um, I know that you were actively interested in the costs of uh doing this work. Currently, the quote we received was well below what we budgeted. Uh, in fact, in the five thousand dollar range, and so uh I authorized that work to go forward, seeing. That I figured that they would get in and they would find something else, and I would have to come back to council to ask for more money. Uh, it seems like that is not the case. Um, I'm not, uh, I'm not suggesting that we maybe got it all done for five thousand, but I I would suspect that it's a good news story when it does come forward to council in the near future. And then finally, I think I'll, um, uh, the other thing I would wrap wrap up, we had our um. Uh, four year, so Peterborough Public Health, because we maintain and operate a a series of very small water systems uh for each of our buildings. Uh, every four years, we are subject uh to inspection. Uh, Peterborough Public Health came through and inspected all of our water systems, and I'm happy to report that uh. Um, with some minor uh requirements, uh, we are, all of those systems have passed and are operating well. Uh, there's just some reporting uh requirements that we have to make sure that we're following. Uh, and uh certainly has been brought to my attention and will be uh maintained going forward in the future. Uh, that's summarizes most of my report, but I'm happy to take any questions, comments, concerns you may have.
Thank you very much, sir. Uh, any comments, questions, Council Johnson?
Uh, just when you say the buildings, that includes the arenas.
Uh, through the chair to Council Johnson, absolutely. In fact, the uh our systems at the arenas are the uh best maintained. Uh, and uh best inspected water systems.
Thank you. I got a question that you and need to get back to me, let me know, but I meant after a fire. When people take out the permit. Uh, then I understand every time they're going to have a fire, they're supposed to phone, they say they're going to have a fire. Like, not even a little, you have a fire pot in the back. Um, unnecessary, but but a little fire in the yard that you phone in every time you're going to light a fire there.
Uh, through the care, Chair to Council Johnson, as I understand it, I think it is, any fire that you're having on your property needs to be phoned in. Um, and really, what it does is it, it's it's more of an, you know, what it does is you have a permit that says you're going to have fires. When you call in, it activates that permit for the period of time that you're having a fire. Really, what it does is it lets the fire department know, so that if somebody from the public calls and says. So and so is having a fire, what's going on, we're aware that it's actually having a fire, so we don't dispense uh uh. Fire folks out to those uh, to those places, but that's the way I understand the system works, but I'm happy to get more information if you'd like.
Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, thank you very much, Todd. I will receive a motion to receive with thanks. Deputy Mayor Nelson, Council Johnson, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much. All right, so that concludes today's committee, the whole general meeting. Uh, any new business uh to be requested for the next meeting, if uh it could be. Put in now or within two weeks of the meeting, next meeting, uh, to the clerk, that would be great, so it can be on the agenda. Um, we have no closed session today. Our next committee, the whole meeting will be August twenty seventh. And I will, if there's nothing else, I will look for a motion to adjourn. Deputy Mayor Nelson. Mayor Watson, all in favor? Carrie, thank you very much, everyone. Thank you for your diligence and and great questions, and thank you to all the staff for putting this together for us.